I call the November 9, 2021 City Council Special Meeting to Order. City Clerk Ben Lane, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor David Ortega.
Present.
Vice Mayor Tammy Kapooty.
Here.
Council members Tom Durham.
Here.
Betty Janik.
Here.
Kathy Littlefield.
Here.
Linda Millhaven.
Here.
And Solange Whitehead.
Here.
City Manager Jim Thompson.
Here.
City Attorney Sherry Scott.
Here.
City Treasurer Sonia Andrews.
Here.
And the Clerk is present. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. The sole purpose of this special meeting is to look at our boards, commissions, and task forces. Specifically, we will do some interviews and appointments. I will now turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Kapooty for the boards, commissions, and task force interviews and appointments.
Thank you, Mayor. Scottsdale City Council is responsible for establishing city policies and enacting laws in support of those policies. The council relies on volunteer citizen-based boards and commissions to research issues and make recommendations in support of the council's missions and goals. The information and recommendations provided by council-appointed advisory boards are a valuable tool in helping council members in their deliberations. This afternoon, the City Council will be appointing Scottsdale residents interested in serving on various boards and commissions. I want to thank the individuals for their willingness to volunteer their time in service to this community. Following this set of interviews, we'll vote on an appointment for the board or commission. As I call your name, please approach the podium and briefly cover the following. For the record, please state your name and address and how long you've lived in Scottsdale. Please tell us how your education, employment, or volunteer experience relates to this board or commission, and what is the top issue facing this board or commission. Please limit your comments to two minutes or less. We have a timer by the screen to help you manage your time. Following each nominee's response, I'll ask council members if they have any follow-up questions for you. So we will first hear about the Board of Adjustment, in which there is one opening, one vacancy. We have two nominees. The nominees are Julian Anderson and Daniel Isak. Mr. Isak will be participating in this afternoon's meeting electronically. So, Mr. Anderson, if you'd like to approach the podium.
Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, thank you. My name is Julian Anderson. I live at 8210 East Del Claro Drive in Scottsdale. I've been a resident of the city of Scottsdale for 23 years. I work in professional practice within the development and construction world and have done so for 45 years. My degree is related to construction with a particular aspect in property development. I am an arbitrator with the American Arbitration Association, which I rank as being important because it gives me training in listening to different parties, understanding complex issues, and coming down with sound decisions to help parties resolve matters either in dispute or contention. The Board of Adjustment has the power to hear and decide on appeals from administrative decisions and variances. That's it. It's not a planning commission, doesn't get to change the town plan. All it does is help small matters of adjustment to zoning issues. I understand that fully. I've read through the minutes of the board and have a decent understanding of the types of matters that come before it. I'd like to serve on the board and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any council members have questions for Mr. Anderson? Okay, seeing none, thank you. I think we are going to hear from Mr. Isak electronically. I don't know how that gets queued up.
Hello, this is Daniel Isaac. I apologize for not being in person. As I mentioned in my email to you, it's our first non-canceled cruise after COVID. My name is Daniel Isaac. I live at 13530 East Onyx Court. I've lived in Scottsdale full-time for five years, but have had a home here for over 10 years. My experience, I think, is really based on my interests, my abilities, and my time. I have a lot of interest in this area. As President of my HOA, I spearheaded the development of rules and regulations as well as architectural guidelines to make sure that our community maintains its character while still allowing for personal taste, but also to make sure that residents conform to the appropriate behaviors with the neighborhood. I'm in the process of doing the same thing at my new HOA. As far as ability, my background was 30 years as a consultant with Willis Towers Watson, and my work included understanding hundreds of pages of statutes, regulations, judicial rulings, and IRS opinions as applied to pension and benefit plans. And I've also got the highest credential from the side of actuary, and I'm government-certified as a pension actuary under the Joint Board. My formal education is applied math and industrial management from Carnegie Mellon, which combines, you know, analysis as well as a business acumen, and I think that works well in this specific role. You understand hundreds of pages, their intent, and how to apply them and when to make an adjustment for that. My work took 60 to 70 hours. I am now retired, so I've got plenty of time to commit to this. And the top issue is to ensure that any deviations balance the desires of the petitioner with the needs of the community, and that's residents, businesses, and visitors. And we have to understand the rules as well as the current and expected needs of the cities, including how to retain its character, allow for rational growth, and continue to make Scottsdale a desirable place to work and live. And then consistent application of these deviations is important to ensure credibility with the community.
Thank you. Do any council members have any questions for Mr. Isak? Is it Isaac or Isak?
We actually go by Isaac.
Isaac, okay. I don't want to pronounce it wrong the next 10 times. Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, then I will now entertain a vote for the Board of Adjustment. Each council member can vote for one nominee. I'm going to start with myself, and we'll just go chronologically here. I vote for Daniel Isak. Isaac, please. Daniel Isak.
Daniel Isak.
Julian Anderson.
Julian Anderson.
Daniel Isak.
Is that Mr. Isak? Okay. So Mr. Isak has been appointed. Thank you. Moving to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, there is one vacancy and one nominee. The nominee is Janice Eng. Ms. Eng, will you please approach the podium?
That was quick. Good afternoon, everyone. Just a pleasure to be here. I'm just so excited to be back in City Hall. In any event, my name is Janice Eng. Let's see, I live at 13051 North 145th Way in Scottsdale, and I've been a resident of Scottsdale for over 13 years now. My most recent experience is that I just termed out after spending six years on the Human Services Commission, which was near and dear to my heart. I'll make this very short and sweet. I thought it was a good transition going over to the Citizens Oversight Bond Committee, being that I've got a strong financial background. But I would like to thank each and every one of you for your consideration for me to continue serving the people of Scottsdale and the City Council. Thank you very much. Good to see everybody.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Eng? Seeing none, I will entertain a vote for the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Councilwoman Whitehead, you can kick it off.
Janice Eng.
Janice Eng.
Janice Eng.
Janice Eng.
Janice Eng.
Janice Eng.
And Janice Eng. Janice Eng has been appointed. Congratulations. Environmental Advisory Commission, we have two openings. There are special qualifications. As specified in the Scottsdale City Code, the membership of the board shall reflect both scientific and non-scientific interests. Heather Abrahami, Suzette Gibson, Donna Hartz, and Victoria Kozlarych have withdrawn their applications from consideration. There are two vacancies and five nominees. The nominees are Ute Brady, Larry Marchman, who will be participating electronically, Alyssa McMahon, Jordan Miller, and Andrew Scheck. If we could have Ute Brady approach the podium.
Okay, I hope everybody can hear me. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Ute Brady. I live at 8207 East Jack Rabbit Road, and I've been a Scottsdale resident for 26 years. I have a PhD in environmental social science from Arizona State University. I study policy design and collective action. Specifically, I look at the connection between formal environmental policies and how they are perceived and implemented, and how those connections may affect environmental and social outcomes. I've been involved in studies that assess the effect of policy design on sustainable urban water governance, coastal climate change, and also on conservation policies. As a Scottsdale resident, I would be honored to give back to my community by sharing my knowledge and expertise to help Scottsdale be better equipped to face the climate challenges before us, because drought and heat will be exacerbated over the upcoming decades, and we need to be prepared. Now, of course, Scottsdale is already addressing many important environmental issues, as evidenced in the new general plan, and many of those, such as water, energy, and conservation, and improving urban biodiversity and resilience. I would very much value contributing to these efforts by working collectively with the Environmental Advisory Commission towards a more sustainable future for my city. And I truly believe that Scottsdale can be a model for resilient and adaptive desert city, and I would be honored to be a part of that mission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Brady? Do we go to the electronic, or do we... Okay. Next, we'll hear from Larry Marchman, who will be participating electronically.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you for the opportunity to put my name in for the Environmental Advisory Commission. My name is Larry Marchman, and I live at 16807 North 106th Way, 85255, and I've been a resident here since 2004. My experience and background that is relevant is going back to 2008. I've been involved in the renewable energy project development field. I have developed over 100 megawatts of commercial solar and battery storage projects. Many of my projects were done with municipalities and school districts, including the city of Scottsdale, Scottsdale Unified School District, city of Tempe, city of Mesa, city of Chandler, and many others. The top issue, I think, facing this commission is how to help the city achieve 100% clean energy goals, and I believe that there's multiple ways that that can happen, by increasing the use of distributed generation, solar and battery storage, but there's other technologies that can be looked at and are appropriate, maybe looking at microgrid technology for some of the critical infrastructure, like the water treatment facility. And finally, I think the city should have the autonomy to negotiate with independent power producers to negotiate contracts for clean energy and that are more economical. And so it's a challenge, but it's also an opportunity for the city. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Marchman. Does anyone have any questions? Next, we'll hear from Alyssa McMahon.
Fogging there. Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Alyssa McMahon. I've resided at 7454 East Camino Rayo de Luz for 15 years. I am passionate about the environment. Professionally, my background is in the biosciences. That's relevant to the public health implications of environmental issues, but beyond that, it informs my approach. I research, analyze, synthesize, and then make recommendations based on best practices, science, and what I believe will work for Scottsdale. In 2014, I wrote a sentence that really sums up my philosophy. It read, "Economic growth, environmental stewardship, fiscal responsibility are interrelated and mutually achievable goals." I truly believe that. The 2014 General Plan Task Force put that sentence into the Environment Chapter's introduction, and I'm proud to say it remains there today in our newly ratified general plan. I was previously a member and chair of Scottsdale's Environmental Quality Advisory Board, known as ECAB. A few of my accomplishments include, along with others, revised and updated Scottsdale's Green Building Program residential checklist, co-drafted ECAB's drought management advisory, revived and updated Idling Gets You Nowhere, ECAB's public awareness campaign to improve air quality, drafted ECAB's memorandum to council that led to the creation of the Solid Way Strategic Plan, and collaborated with Danworth on drafting that plan. No question, we face several environmental challenges, but the top issue for SEEK over the next 12 to 18 months will be participation in the onboarding of Scottsdale's first Sustainability Director and participation in the development of Scottsdale's first Sustainability Plan. That plan will give us the vision, goals, metrics, and strategies to tackle our environmental challenges now and into the future, and I very much want to be a part of developing that plan. I have other goals as well. I'll quickly mention just two: assisting with adoption of and amendments to the 2021 building codes, and greater implementation of the Solid Way Strategic Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. McMahon?
Thank you.
I just realized I left my mask on.
Oh, it sounded great. Jordan Miller is next.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jordan Miller. I live at 8215 East Wilshire Drive, and I have lived there for 19 years. Currently, I'm an economics major at ASU, but I have interned at BSB Designs, and I have background in researching innovative and green types of building projects. Along with that, I also served on the Scottsdale Mayor's Youth Council, so I have a real care and appreciation for what this city can do and how we can keep our parks clean and so forth. As far as what my top issue is, I bike pretty regularly down and through the Green Belt, and something that I've had to be considering recently is the air condition that I have to look at before I go out for a ride. And so if I was appointed, one of the number-one things is to make sure that we can clear smog and consider that air conditions are good so that my kids, when I have them, will be able to go through the Green Belt, just like I'm enjoying it today. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And last, we have Andrew Scheck.
Hello, everybody. It's a pleasure being here. It's nice to be nominated again this year. There's a lot of great candidates, and I've been listening to their background and some incredible education behind it, with a lot of great ideas. To start, I live at 18245 North Pima Road. I've been there for seven years. Previously that, I lived in New York City. Throughout, I would say throughout my career, and it's different into IT through the last 20 years, but I've been involved in many environmental projects, programs, through leading sponsorships, through cleanups, organizing beach cleanups, street cleanups, parkway cleanups, highway, anything I can do inside my company. My last corporation got rid of all paper plates and all styrofoam and moved to recycled paper. I've made a lifestyle out of it. I just don't, as they say, speak it. I live it. I'm a plant-based in my eating habits, for the most part. I do believe that animal ingestion, I also believe that it's incorporated and increased our environmental issues that we have had here. I've heard a lot of suggestions when it comes to energy, when it comes to ideas about where we can go, but I kind of feel that there's a certain point that we're missing when it comes to Scottsdale. I think I'm also part of COGS and been very involved with them lately. I think what we have with the buildings and the increase in apartment buildings and residential complexes that are coming up in Scottsdale with the numbers that will be happening, I see a lot of, I would say, most of them don't have any green initiatives. I see that there's a lack of windows, there's a lack of solar power, there is a lack of any of these new developments and new buildings that bring anything that would reduce what we see. I lived at, my first apartment was at the Live Across Scottsdale Quarter. Beautiful apartment, but it had basically no windows. My electric bill was sky-high. The current place I live now has a multitude amount of light, and it's very simple. It was just increased windows, terrific architecture, and used of the almost 300 days a year of sun we have in Scottsdale. I think we have an opportunity more when it comes on the residential side, and plus the all the great ideas, I said, these people have fantastic backgrounds, you know, the education. But I see things that we can do now that we're just not doing in place with the increase, the buildings that we increase significantly and exponentially that are coming in the coming years, that we're not addressing that we should. And I think that is a bigger issue of it. I do agree that I'm very happy we're getting a Director of Sustainability. I think a person like that will pay for themselves with the amount of contacts and begging in ideas and revenue to that to basically have more influence in the direction that we head. So I believe those are the two issues we have.
Thank you, Mr. Scheck. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Then I will now entertain a vote for the Environmental Advisory Commission. Each council member can vote for two nominees. We'll start with Councilmember Millhaven.
Ms. Brady and Ms. McMahon.
Sorry. Mayor Ortega.
Ms. Brady and Jordan Miller.
Councilwoman Littlefield.
Dr. Alyssa McMahon and Andrew Scheck.
Councilwoman Janik.
Dr. Alyssa McMahon and Andrew Scheck.
Councilwoman Durham.
Ms. Brady and Mr. Scheck.
Myself, Ms. McMahon and Jordan Miller. Councilwoman Whitehead. Let's see, Ute Brady and Mr. Scheck.
It looks like we have...
I didn't think he recorded your vote correctly.
I can't even see. Mr. Scheck and Ms. Brady.
Ms. McMahon and Jordan Miller.
Okay. So we have Ms. Brady and Ms. McMahon have been appointed to the Environmental Advisory Commission. Is that correct?
No. Just one moment, Vice Mayor.
Wait, yeah, something is...
So, Vice Mayor, again, your votes were for Alyssa McMahon and for Jordan Miller, correct?
Do we vote again?
We had some technical difficulties here, so I apologize. Yeah, we'll have to vote again for the ties, for the top three. So just give us one moment. We'll clear the board, and then we'll vote again amongst the top three.
Yep.
So Brady, Miller, and Scheck.
Brady.
McMahon.
I'm sorry. McMahon and Scheck, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. I'm starting.
Great, so we'll start in the same order. Councilwoman Millhaven.
Ms. Brady and Ms. McMahon.
Mayor Ortega.
Ms. Brady and Scheck.
Councilwoman Littlefield.
Dr. McMahon and Andrew Scheck.
Councilwoman Janik.
Dr. McMahon and Andrew Scheck.
Councilwoman Durham.
Ms. Brady and Mr. Scheck.
Myself, Ms. Brady and Ms. McMahon. Councilwoman Whitehead.
Ms. Brady and Mr. Scheck.
Okay, so that sounds clear. Brady and Scheck have been appointed.
Brady and Scheck have been appointed. Congratulations.
Yes. Thank you for your patience. Sorry about that.
No problem. Okay, Historic Preservation Commission, we have one opening. Special qualifications for this commission, as outlined in the Scottsdale City Code, each member shall have demonstrated special interest, knowledge, or experience in at least one of the following: building construction, history, architectural history, real estate, historic preservation law, or other historic preservation-related field. There's one vacancy and one nominee. The nominee is Courtney Lage. Ms. Lage will be participating in this afternoon's meeting electronically.
Good afternoon. My name is Courtney Lage. I apologize for not being there in person. I hope that you can all hear me. I work currently, right now, for Voices for Casa Children in Old Town Scottsdale, so we were doing a presentation on behalf of the foster care children, so I wasn't able to be there in person. Just very quickly, my name's Courtney Lage. I have a master's degree in educational leadership, and I'm currently working on my doctorate in public policy at ASU. I am a proud resident of beautiful Scottsdale since 1984, so I have seen it grow for 37 years, since being a child, went through the elementary school program here, middle school program, high school, and then also went on to ASU. So I am very passionate about this city. As I mentioned, I've seen it grow. I'm seeing a lot of growth that is very exciting, and a lot of growth that's very concerning in terms of preserving the city and its historical nature. So I'm very interested in this position while always looking at, you know, the positives and negatives of the growth of the city, but also keeping, and a special interest with keeping the city preserved historically and archologically, and making sure that, you know, as we grow and move, that we're not forgetting the history of the city of Scottsdale. Again, I don't think I mentioned... Quickly, I live in Old Town Scottsdale at 6915 East Third Street. So I've lived all over Scottsdale throughout my life and am very familiar with the city, its history, and am very interested in the future and developing and helping preserve
Thank you, Ms. Lage. Does anyone have any questions? And we will now entertain a vote for the Historic Preservation Commission, starting with Mayor Ortega.
Courtney Lage.
Councilwoman Littlefield.
Courtney Lage.
Councilwoman Janik.
Courtney Lage.
Councilwoman Durham.
Courtney Lage.
Courtney Lage.
Courtney Lage.
Courtney Lage.
Courtney Lage has been appointed. Thank you. McDowellson Oran Preserve Commission, there is one vacancy and two nominees. The nominees are Robert Fishman and Mark Hackbarth, whose term expired in October and is eligible for reappointment. Robert Fishman, if you could approach the podium.
Good afternoon, Mayor Ortega, Vice Mayor Kapooty, other members of council. My name is Rob Fishman. I live at 9076 North 117th Way in the Stonegate Community, of which I am Vice Chairman of the Homeowners Association. I have served on public and private boards. I'm a lawyer by training, but I've worked in the insurance business for over 35 years, both as a CEO and a member of both public and private boards. I've led strategic reviews for a global 50 company. I was Executive Director of a forensic mental health system study in Pennsylvania. I have hiked through the US, Switzerland, Austria, Patagonia, and many places in the United States. I live very close to the Lost Dogwash Trail, and I know many of the trails throughout the country. I live very close to the Lost Dogwash Trail, and I know many of the trails throughout the McDowellson. So, the most important issue, I don't think there's one, I think it's about preservation, protection, promotion, and funding. And preservation, to me, implies a continuous protection for fire, erosion, lack of water, invasive plants, density of use, the control of e-bikes, research and education, promotion to children, and making sure that we have significant and sufficient space in the next 10 to 20 years, which implies the necessity of acquiring land. And how are we going to do that? And it implies funding. So where do we get the funding? How do we match the funds from grants to continue perpetual maintenance in the McDowellson? I know that that's an issue that's coming up in the spring. I know that, you know, it would be great to potentially extend the 2/10ths of 1% sales tax. But I really want to emphasize that what I do really well is I work on strategy, develop priorities, figure out the objectives, and create steps to implement them.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions? Councilwoman Littlefield?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your interest in serving Scottsdale. I wanted to ask you if you could go into a little bit more detail on how you feel about the e-bikes in the Preserve. This has raised a lot of controversy here in Scottsdale.
Yeah, so my feeling is, is that if we're going to have e-bikes in the Preserve, there ought to be a dedicated area to that. I don't think that e-bikes are appropriate in most trails in the Reserve. They go too fast, I think that they erode the trails, and I think it potentially creates danger for those that are walking.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great, thank you. Mark Hackbarth?
My name's Mark Hackbarth. I reside at 6022 East Redbird Road in Scottsdale. I've lived there for the past 29 years. My professional experience has been as an archaeologist. I've been employed full-time since October 1982 in Arizona, and my largest accomplishment to date doing that has been as a senior author of the City of Scottsdale's Cultural Resource Master Plan for the Preserve. Part of that has brought me the experience, I believe, that suits me for this commission. I recognize that preservation, education, research, and natural wildlife and vegetation are prime goals of having the Preserve, and I support that obviously very immensely. My advocacy, though, on this commission would be for cultural resources. These are nonrenewable resources, and I believe they are extremely important to bring them to the public, as far as educate them, people of what is out there, and what is the significance of the resources that we have. My work, I think, in the past three years has been towards that advocacy for archaeological sites. Have any questions? I'll take them.
Councilwoman Littlefield? I imagine you want to ask the same question?
I would like to ask you the same question, yes. How do you feel about e-bikes in the Preserve?
My opinion is that e-bikes have a lot of drawbacks, between the noise, the speed, and the increased number of people on trails that they would bring. I really think that the city has already provided areas outside of the Preserve that are adequate for their use, and that's where I believe they should stay.
Thank you.
Great. I will now entertain a vote for the McDowellson Orrin Preserve Commission. Each council member can vote for one nominee. We'll start with Councilwoman Littlefield.
Thank you. Mark Hackback, Hackbarth, excuse me.
Councilwoman Janik.
Mark Hackbarth.
Councilwoman Durham.
Mark Hackbarth.
My vote is for Robert Fishman. Councilwoman Whitehead.
Mark Hackbarth.
Councilwoman Millhaven.
Mark Hackbarth.
Mayor Ortega.
Mark Hackbarth.
Mark Hackbarth has been appointed. Thank you. Parks and Recreation Commission, there is one vacancy and one nominee, as Alexandra Albert has withdrawn her application from consideration. The nominee is Steve Maser. Mr. Maser, if you would approach the podium. Is he not in attendance?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, he was scheduled to attend, but it doesn't look like he's present, so we can just move on to the next commission.
So we're not going to take a vote at all?
Or, I'm sorry, if you'd like to, he did submit written responses in your materials, so I apologize. Yes, you most definitely can.
Sure. I think, do we need to have a vote on the council, or we're just good to proceed?
No, you can definitely go through it.
Great. So we will start with Councilwoman Janik.
Steve Maser.
Councilwoman Durham.
Steve Maser.
I vote for Steve Maser.
Steve Maser.
Steve Maser.
Steve Maser.
Steve Maser.
Steve Maser, you've been appointed. Thank you. Paths and Trails Subcommittee, there's one citizen rep opening. This has special qualifications. Subcommittee shall consist of five members, two transportation commissioners, one Parks and Rec Commissioner, and two non-commission members. Non-commission members are appointed by the City Council for terms of three years with a maximum of two terms. There's one vacancy and one nominee. The nominee is Kyle Davis. Mr. Davis's term has expired and is eligible for reappointment. He's not able to join us this afternoon, however, he's very much interested in being reappointed to the committee. He's not going to call in, we're just saying...
Vice Mayor, no.
Great. So I will now entertain a vote for Paths and Trails Subcommittee. We'll start with Councilman Durham.
Kyle Davis.
I vote for Kyle Davis.
Kyle Davis.
Kyle Davis.
Kyle Davis.
Kyle Davis.
Kyle Davis.
Kyle Davis has been appointed. Veterans Advisory Commission, we have four vacancies and five nominees. Sean Osmus has withdrawn his application from consideration. The nominees are Land Anderson, Mark Ashley, who will be participating electronically, Stephen Jackson, Raymond Solari, and Joel Stempel. Mr. Stempel's term expired in October and is eligible for reappointment. So we will hear first from Land Anderson.
My name is Land Anderson. I reside at 7758 East Viadil Forturo, Scottsdale, and I've lived in Scottsdale for two years. It provided the opportunity to serve on this commission, I would bring perspective across three areas to serving our veterans in our community. The first is my status as a veteran. I was fortunate to earn a Navy ROTC scholarship to attend college and served on active duty in the US Navy as a surface warfare officer for five years, reaching the rank of lieutenant. The top learning I have from this experience is that if we provide resources to those serving and those who have served, they will succeed, and our country and our community will be better for it. The second is the perspective I have as a manager at Amazon.com, where I have worked for 16 years, and throughout that entire time, I've supported our military hiring efforts. We have hired 40,000 veterans to date, and are on track to reach a goal of 100,000 veterans within three years. Within that effort, I have hired veterans for my own team, for other teams, and for roles around the world. I have been fortunate to coach and help many of these individuals through these times of transition and change, which can be difficult, as was my own transition. My experience listening to and coaching veterans will help me contribute to this commission. Third, as a member of the Rotary Club of Scottsdale, I have helped organize and participate community service activities. I've also helped with Habitat for Humanity home building for veterans. I also mentor active-duty, special forces personnel transitioning and retiring from the service, as they work on career advice and interviewing skills through the Honor Foundation. I see community involvement as a help to bolstering our ties and bringing veterans together. In closing, I still have a lot to learn about Scottsdale. What I do know from my experience in helping and working with and leading and mentoring veterans is that awareness of resources and opportunities can be limited, whether it's counseling, financial management, or facing challenges such as homelessness, the city and organizations stand ready to help. Veterans are a special group of citizens who continue to serve after they leave the military. Our leaders can continue to call upon veterans to make Scottsdale an even better place. Finding new ways to engage veterans is a challenge and an opportunity for this commission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? We'll hear from Mark Ashley, who will be participating in this afternoon's meeting electronically.
Good afternoon, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mark Ashley, and I have lived at 9330 East Dryness since 1994. Regarding my experience, it began when my family entered the middle class, courtesy of my father's service in the Navy and the GI Bill. I earned my undergraduate degree courtesy of an ROTC scholarship. I took the commission in the Army and began a career as a public servant. Finally, I am completing a term on our Senior Senators Veterans Advisory Council, and I am ready for my next public service assignment. Regarding issues for the VAC, I believe that veterans' outreach and raising the awareness of events, programs, and other veterans-related items is key. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Great. Stephen Jackson is next.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Stephen Jackson. I live at 8416 East Fairmount in Scottsdale. I've been here for 10 years. I came to Scottsdale after I left the military. I left the military because I was a disabled veteran and I was starting school. I was originally a high school dropout. I got my GED and enlisted. I think I'm pretty unique in that fact. I was able to attain, or obtain, a bachelor's in business management. I went to get on, went on to get a master's in business administration, and I went and got a law degree. So now I'm a lawyer here in Scottsdale. I participate in DAV events around the state, doing wills for heroes for free in my spare time. I have a good, have good relationships with the people at the VFW, the DAV, and the American Legion. I'm a life member. I think that the biggest issue in Scottsdale is, if you look at the census that was reviewed in the board meetings last year, we lost over 1,000 veterans in 10 years. So I think for me, the biggest issue in Scottsdale would be drawing veterans. I've got a lot of relationships in the community. I'm a probate lawyer here, and I think that if we can speak with Iraq War veterans and younger veterans, that we'd be able to add to the diversity of Scottsdale in a way that would drive people towards Scottsdale who are patriotic, who are positive, who want to be here, and who will be better for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Okay. Well, thank you. Raymond Solari?
I've lived in Scottsdale since 1995. I came here on a business move, and I live in 92nd Place in Scott, North Scottsdale. I was educated in Vermont, went into the military in 1967, and got out in 1971. As we all know, the military's been engaged in a lot of things since then, and I think it's important that we make available to all our military citizens the opportunity to get all these benefits. I think one of the problems we have is communication. And being able to communicate, there are so many more benefits available today than there ever were when we came out of the service in 1971. My education, as I said, was in St. Michael's College in Vermont, and then I got a master's degree in education in Boston University. I've been in Scottsdale, working as an ambassador for eight years, Scottsdale Downtown Ambassador. I do miss the program. I hope we get it going again. I think it's one of the better programs that we've had in Scottsdale, the chance to meet people. I am retired, I have the time. I've seen a lot of my fellow classmates and friends who did suffer due to the things that came out of the war. Again, for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Solari. Last, we'll hear from Joel Stempel, unless, are there questions? Okay.
Good evening. My name's Joel Stempel. I live at 8951 East Florrie Drive, 85260. I've lived in Scottsdale for 17 years. I'm retired, and I retired in 2015. Been married to my wife, Gail, for 58 years. I have two married daughters, four grandchildren. Currently, I'm commander of the Korean War Veterans, the General Brad Smith, Ray Harvey Chapter of the Korean War Veterans. I'm currently on the Veterans Advisory, or I was on the Veterans Advisory Commission for Scottsdale. And I also serve as the treasurer for the State, KWVA, as well as on the Board of Directors of the Veterans Furniture Center. In addition, I've worked on grants for the state of Arizona that deal with funding of different veterans organizations. I spent 40 years as a financial advisor and branch manager. It was a career that helped me listen to the needs of people and caused me to respond to those needs. Being a branch manager in a brokerage office is second in difficulty to the President of the United States. I believe that we, as a commission, explored issues concerning veterans' needs and have taken significant steps to address those issues. My goal, and the commission's goal, is to help veterans and their families with housing, education, and jobs, and I specifically want to work on financial education for veterans. This is what I'd like to do if I'm reappointed. In conclusion, I served as a first lieutenant in the United States Army. I was in Germany in the 60s during the Cold War. I also served three years in the reserves, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Stempel. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Councilwoman Janik?
Yeah. Could you just tell me a little bit about your ideas on how we can deal with homelessness in the veteran population?
In the homelessness, we've worked on that, and one of the things, as we know in Scottsdale, the houses, housing is pretty expensive. And so we've been trying to, and I use my experience in the Veterans Furniture Center, where we've been working also, and it's pretty impossible to find housing. That's something that has been a real problem that we've discussed in the veteran, in the current, or the previous Veterans Advisory Commission. And I think we have to work a little harder in that, and maybe as far as the educational, or the education that we want to work with, I think we ought to also try to work more with resources in the city as far as finding housing for veterans and their families.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now entertain a vote for the Veterans Advisory Commission. Each council member can vote for four nominees. I'll start with myself. I vote for Land Anderson, Mark Ashley, Stephen Jackson, and Joel Stempel. Councilwoman Whitehead?
Thank you. I vote for Land Anderson, Mark Ashley, Stephen Jackson, and Joel Stempel.
Land Anderson, Mark Ashley, Stephen Jackson, and Joel Stempel.
Mayor Ortega?
Land Anderson, Stephen Jackson, Mr. Solari, Solari, and Joel Stempel.
Councilwoman Littlefield?
Mark, excuse me, Mark Ashley, Joel Stempel, Stephen Jackson, and Raymond Solari.
Councilwoman Janik?
Mark Ashley, Stephen Jackson, Raymond Solari, and Joel Stempel.
Councilman Durham?
Land Anderson, Mark Ashley, Stephen Jackson, and Joel Stempel.
Okay, so it looks like we have Land Anderson, Mark Ashley, Stephen Jackson, and Joel Stempel have been appointed. Thank you. This concludes our appoint... This concludes our appointment process for today. I would like to thank all of our nominees for their interest in serving on a city board or commission. We are fortunate to continue to receive qualified applicants for the positions on our boards and commissions. Even if you are not appointed today, your application will remain on file for consideration at a future date if there are additional vacancies. City staff will contact the individuals appointed this evening and provide them with information on next steps regarding their appointment. The City of Scottsdale is very fortunate to have such dedicated and talented individuals who are willing and ready to serve for our city. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, and I will echo those comments. That concludes the board commission selections. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And seconded.
Second.
All in favor, register your vote. We are adjourned. We will reconvene at 5 o'clock for our regular council meeting.